Good morning, welcome to the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees meeting for September 9, 2014. I'd like to call on Denise to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the Secretary to call a roll.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Ryden Hall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Ask approval of the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second to accept the amended agenda, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly on the amendment, the budget hearings and the tentative agenda should read August 12, not July 22.
That correction was sent to us, is that right?
No.
Which one?
The amendment.
It should be August 12.
Should be August 12. It went from August 22 to July 22.
I see, that's correct.
We need to be sure it's August 12.
We need an amendment to the amendment. Okay, let's put Peggy on notice.
I don't see how Peggy tracks it all anyway, so.
And I amend the motion to accept the friendly amendment by trustee Daniels.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to accept the amended, amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Ask approval of the budget hearing minutes for August the 12th?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the budget hearing minutes of August the 12th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Ask approval of the regular meeting minutes for August the 12th?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second to accept the regular meeting minutes of August the 12th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Audience to patrons petitioners, anyone wishing to speak to the board this morning? Not hearing anyone. Next we'll go to communications. President.
We have Andrika, Will Coxon, and Mary Hoffman, are they here?
So.
Andrika's gonna give us an update on the back-to-school fair and an upcoming event that has to do with our alumni.
Good morning, how are you all doing?
Good morning.
It's great to be here, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I just wanted to give a quick update about our 2014 back-to-school fair that we held here in Wynette County, one location being here at Kansas City Kansas Community College and the second location being at the Boys and Girls Club. If you look on the screen, these are all the committee members, organizations from across Wynette County that participated to make this event happen. We know that we can't do it by ourselves and this year the committee was phenomenal. It was a large committee compared to the past years and so it was really great to get a variety of people's opinions, ideas, and suggestions for the fair. What you'll see here is our objectives, this is what we try to do each year is serve the about 1,500 families, we're looking, we served 5,000 backpacks to our Wynette County students. In the backpacks were general school supplies, notebook, paper, pencils, pens, and things like that. We also encouraged community service opportunities for our local Wynette County students. Many of our high school students are given laptops and they can serve community service hours in replace of money. So apparently you can serve eight hours or four hours and that will replace the deposit for their laptops at the school district. So we have a lot of our students who take advantage of that because for many families there are multiple students in high school and that costs, can be pretty costly for them. So the other cool thing we had was community organizations that participate with this fair. We have a lot of great resources in Wynette County and I'm gonna tell you what, I have to give kudos to all of our exhibitors that participate because they are everywhere in Wynette County. They are committed and dedicated to give out these resources. So that first day of school is great that they have all their school supplies, but we want sustainability with our families. We want these resources to be in their hands so that when they're having trouble with parenting issues, truancy, or just different things like that, we want to make sure that we have the resources available to them. And so it was this great opportunity to be able to work with all these organizations. These are how we determined, we tracked our outcomes and you'll see that in a few minutes. And one of the really cool things that we were able to add here this year at the college is we added our cosmetology program. They came in and gave haircuts and it was just a really neat thing to be able to see that with our students. One student, bless her heart, her hands were shaking as she was cutting this young man's hair, you know, she wanted to be really careful, but it was just a cool experience that we saw for our students here. So here's our data, total persons served is 3,900 people here. And if you look at the whole students served, what we do is our data is we look at everybody, then we separate just families, then we look at individual students. So our students served was 2,969, which is great. And if you look at the different volunteers, I just wanted to just give real kudos to United Way, great organization that provided a lot of volunteers for us. We had several volunteers at Kansas City Kansas Community College. The Boys and Girls Club was a little low this year, first time for that location, it was a little hidden in the community, there wasn't really great signage. We had another event that was going on and our event was a little later this year than it has been in the past. So we had some things, you know, that kind of took our numbers down. We were probably at a 17% decrease this year with our numbers, but not too low. So next year we're gonna take it back to the original weekend and we're looking at a second location potentially for next year, one that's more feasible especially for our South Wynette County residents. The exhibitors, we had quite a few, the sports physicals went up. That line here at the college, 2325 right downstairs was long, it was awesome. Dr. Rios got to see how many people were waiting for sports physicals and last year there wasn't, didn't seem like there was quite a lot, but this year they, people took advantage of that. And I don't know if it was because it was later in the summer and people just knew that they had to get them done. Immunizations also went up, a lot of families came in and got the different immunizations, multiple immunizations for one student. So it was really cool to see. We want to thank the UST 500 School District for providing lunches, nutritional lunches for all of our families. Everyone that attended the fair received a nutritional lunch, so it was really cool. Some pictures, this is the highlight, I talked to campus police.
Can I ask a couple questions? Who did the, who provided the immunizations and the sports physicals? Why did the Health Department do that or KU Med Center?
Both, University of Kansas Medical Center and the Wynette County Health Department, yes.
Thank you.
Here's some highlights of some pictures, I talked to campus police and they said that I came in about a quarter till six and there were people lined up and apparently they were lined up at 4:30 in the morning. Our community residence takes this very seriously and it was just really neat, babies, infants wrapped in blankets because it was a cool morning. So it was exciting that they wanted to be here and get in and get out. The really cool piece about having two locations is that the lines aren't as long, they don't have to stand outside very long, they can come in and get out. Before when we only had one location, the line went up to pretty much till noon or 1:00. Now that we have two locations, the line ends about 10:30, 11:00, and we have plenty of supplies so people don't feel like they have to come so early in the morning. So it was just a great turnout, you see the lines starting from the very beginning all the way to the back to the PAC. Inside the upper jewel hall, this room was filled with people going downstairs to the lower jewel, just completely filled with people, it was pretty cool. Here's our showcase of some of our exhibitors who are faithful in coming to, I mean, any community event, you'll see these mocks, who was there, UST 500 was there, parents, teachers was there, we had all three can care groups here signing people up who needed insurance, that was really cool. Some more of our exhibitors here, look at our little kids, once they went through and got the backpacks, they were very happy and excited to receive those backpacks. And then moving into physicals and then outside eating lunch, having a great time, and moving into immunizations which was in the water hole in the math science, math building, so. Anyway, so that's it for that one, does anyone have any questions? It was a great weekend and we want to thank Kansas City Kansas Community College for being able to host this and all of our partners because again, it couldn't be done without the partnerships.
Well, you should be, you know, we should be thanking you for your work in this and your leadership, it was a great event and I think that we appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, to the next event that we are planning, Mary Hoffman and I have gotten together and are working toward the first annual Alumni Weekend here at Kansas City Kansas Community College. Yay! This all was, started out with, I was working with Tony, I help him with our blue crew here on campus trying to develop school spirit with our athletics and students. And we found out that that weekend was all of our fall sports were playing here at home that weekend. And so it kind of just said, you know, well, let's just bring people here. And the one thing, I love our athletic department and they're doing a great job, but I think we have some other great things here on our campus, our theater, humanities, our, all the new, the tech center, all the new things going on. And so I went to Mary and I found out about Mary, I didn't know about Mary, and just keep asking questions, you'll just, you'll find someone. And we figured out this would be a really great opportunity. I've talked with Patrick in Endowment, he's on board to help us in whatever way he can as well. We have many partners across the campus, our staff senate is sponsoring us, our athletics, the bookstore will be helping us as well, the arts humanities and social services will be, that department's helping us, intercultural center, wellness center, and we're developing more as we continue to spread this weekend around campus. A lot of people are asking questions and there's a lot of things that Mary and I are just trying to work out, we're getting ready to develop some committees. So if anyone is interested in participating in the alumni weekend, we would love for more people involved, the greater, you know, weekend is this gonna be. So board members, if anyone would like to help us, we'd love for you to help us. What we have here is just a tentative, and I apologize, I was hoping it would be a little bit bigger on the screen, some tentative activities for the alumni weekend. Again, we're gonna kick off with our Friday night evening tailgate party at the soccer field, we've got a men's and women's game that night and we've got hot dogs, snow cones, cotton candy, inflatables, and just talk with the fire department to get their fire simulator here on our campus, this is a really cool thing. We've also got that same weekend, which we're really excited about, is our theater department is hosting a play called Babes in Arms and it's just gonna be, it's a musical actually, so it'll be really cool. And then we move into Saturday, hopefully having a breakfast meet and greet, some fun photos, an alumni panel. I wasn't here long ago, but I hear that bookstore was in allied health and when I start talking about that stuff, people start to smile and they're like, oh yeah, I remember that, and it's kind of cool to bring those memories back. So it's really gonna be great to have them on campus to see all the great changes. That evening, we are excited, we are going to host our humanities, theater department's going to host a dinner theater, so mark that on your calendars, I think that's gonna be really awesome to have here on our campus. Sunday, we're moving into, we're still looking at some times, Trinity Community Church is willing to host a KCK alumni service, so that was really cool. So if we have people who are coming from out of town, they at least have a place to worship on that Sunday morning. And of course, you can't forget the Chiefs, right? Yeah, okay, anyway, I'm not sure who they play, but, okay, so, yeah, so.
Some people have forgotten already.
Oh, no!
One game, we're done.
Yeah, we're gonna, we want to accommodate everybody that comes and Mary is really great about making sure that every different person is, got something to do. So if they want to go to the theater at 2:30 that afternoon, that's an opportunity, if they want to celebrate the Chiefs, you know, ongoing fight, then we'll, we have an opportunity for that as well. Moving into Monday, the goal is to keep everyone here until Monday and I know we have a lot of local alumni because Monday evening that ends the whole alumni weekend is our women's volleyball team. And I'm not sure if anyone watched lately, the women's volleyball team, they are phenomenal, I'm telling you, they are doing such a great job. And so we want to make sure our alumni come and see them that evening. So we've got intercultural center doing something, our wellness center's going to be promoting their classes and having, giving free passes for alumni. Our bookstore, we have tours at the tech center and here on campus and just some really cool, our vocal music is inviting people to come in for their rehearsals and the art gallery, the cool thing that we have here. So we've got some really great things that we'd like to share and we are probably missing something, we're trying to put something together and that's why we need everyone's help to help us with this. So feel free to let us know if you'd like to assist with this and I guess it's open up for questions.
I cannot believe Mary didn't say nothing.
I told her to call on me if she wanted me to say anything.
I've never seen you that quiet.
Well, I'm willing to talk.
Andrika, I'd like for you to come up with something you want the board to do and how we can help with this. It's an exciting weekend that you planned and I think we ought to be able to fit somewhere in there to support you.
We do want to have a reception for former teachers, instructors, faculty, and staff. So if the board would like to host that, that would be wonderful. We're looking at, we wanted to have the art gallery open downstairs on Saturday morning and have a breakfast. Unfortunately for the weekend, but fortunate for the college, we have a huge event that day in lower jewel with students coming in. And so we won't be able to do that original plan, but the good news is our alumni who come back will be seeing a lot of activity here on the campus, so we're delighted about that. There are a variety of things that we could work with on the board, so Andrika and I will be working on that a little bit and thank you for that offer, we'll be getting back to you.
Can I, kind of, this is for both of you, I know we have somewhat struggled about having a comprehensive database of alumni and I would think this would be a good opportunity to document, so I'm sure you're thinking about that, of a really effective way of documenting that and in developing a database for that for the college, so.
It's been amazing, we're using my phone number because she has other things to do at her desk on a regular basis, this is kind of an extra thing she's come into. We're getting calls from people from out of town who are hearing about this, we're getting emails from people. One gentleman would like to help, but since he's in and out of town, won't obligate to that right now, but definitely wants to be involved. A couple of ladies who were here years ago have called, they do want to be involved. So as we set these committees up, we will be involving people in the planning process. We probably have a longer list of projects to look at for next year because we don't have time to implement them this year. So this can be nothing but the foundation for a huge, wonderful opportunity for us to celebrate those people who go to school here. And when they leave, we let them know, we didn't just want them here for their money and to take a class, we wanted them here to be a part of this phenomenal community and this fantastic college. So I think it can do nothing but get better, Kathy, and we're very excited about that.
I agree and I just, as I said, I think the documentation of all those who attend and current information is gonna be really critical for the future of that event, but also for the college.
Yeah, BAS has been working, I've been working with BAS since January actually to try to build some way to put a link on our database for people to go in and leave their information. You know, we are restricted to certain methods of solicitation for that kind of information through FERPA. So we have to have that person know that we're here and we want them to be here, but they have to initiate that with their information. So by coming, you're right, it's the good foundation to go forward.
And then if I can add, you know, we talked to Patrick with Endowment and they are excited to be able to partner with us and help us in any way, so that piece of alumni is gonna be with them and so, yeah, so I'm activities and that's their responsibility. Can I delegate that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And he has a list already. Patrick has a list he's sharing with us.
We also are currently working with alumni associations across Wynette County, so we've spoken with Sumner and that was, they were really excited about it. We have a person here, a staff here on campus who's celebrating a, I guess she would probably want me to tell you how many years, but they're having their reunion this year and she's sharing that with her local high school alumni, so we're getting the word out to them. And the goal is, is if you've taken one class at Kansas City Kansas Community College, you are an alumni. So we want everybody to come, including our adult education students, our technical education students, and anyone here on main campus, Leavenworth campus, so we want this, everyone to know that if you've been here in a class, we want you to come that weekend, so.
Can I take a minute to talk about something else? The Arts Humanities and Social Sciences is hosting a tea dance this coming Sunday. Many of you will have received the memo about that or the news release. It is a fundraiser for our group that's going to Cuba. Tea Dance, for those of you who are too young to know, is a two to four in the afternoon dance with big band music, Glenn Miller, Count Basie, Duke Ellington, that kind of music. And we're hosting it here in Wynette County, but at the Lake of the Forest Clubhouse. So a real unique environment, a real unique experience in a market we don't normally reach. So if you're interested in coming to that, call me for your reservation and it's extension 7266, be glad to save a place for you at our table.
Where's the Lake of the Forest?
Edwardsville.
It's, yeah, it's between.
Right on K-32 Highway.
You can come down seven to Bonner Springs and go east, probably about a mile and a half or two miles, maybe? Or come down 435 and go west on 32, about four miles. Okay, and I'll be glad to send you a map.
It's not at that clubhouse.
Lake of the Forest Clubhouse.
Lake of the Forest Clubhouse.
Yes, and that clubhouse where we have it. And that's not the same place that we have the employees?
No, that's Lake Quabera. This was a private area that was developed in the 20s for the wealthy people on Ward Parkway who wanted a summer retreat. And they had big porches all the way around the edge of the house, so they got the summer breeze. What happened was with the crash in the late 20s, a lot of building just stopped out there. And slowly it was acquired because it was reasonable and now it's back to being a very nice upscale gated community and the clubhouse is reminiscent of Frank Lloyd Wright kinds of things. You know, evidently, Don. Okay, we'll let Don tell you about it. Okay, thank you so much for letting me squeeze that in.
This Sunday.
This Sunday, 14th.
Well, thank you again for all the information in the report and all the work you've done. Let's move along to the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a new face at the table, Mr. Bob Layton, and he's the interim chief financial officer and he'll tell you more about himself when he submits his report. The Kansas Association of Community College Trustees and the Council of Presidents' Annual Retreat is being hosted by Pratt College and four of us, Mr. Maddox, Mrs. Flunder, Mr. Ash, and I will be leaving on Thursday afternoon to travel to Pratt for the retreat. We're looking forward to some exciting information exchange. The Alumni Weekend, you've already heard about that, the track is open and if you got a copy or you saw a copy of On Campus, you saw a couple of people going into, going through the turnstile onto the track on Saturday. I did my walk Saturday morning at 6:00 and did my walk on there. It is very nice to be back on campus. And so far, we have 113 people who have been in, filled out the paperwork, and received their IDs. So it's gonna be used again. The police office is open from 5:00 AM until 8:00 AM, Monday through Thursday, and from 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Fridays during the month of September. So that the early walkers and the late afternoon walkers can get into the police station and get their ID cards. So that's a convenience that the police have provided for them. The Foundation, formerly the Endowment, has, you will find at your place is a copy of the draft, the latest draft of the bylaws. The board's attorney, Mr. Nguyen, has reviewed the document and his comments have been incorporated. So as soon as the board reads through, you don't have them?
You don't have them.
Okay, you'll have them after we go to, you will get them this morning. We'll make sure we get those to you so that you can preview them and then we can get them back to the Foundation for their board approval too. As planned, the college had received final notice from Doug Weiss of Chevron that Chevron Energy Services was sold to Optera on August 29th and the board was aware of that, so that has happened. And the contract information and all of that is available that I can share with you if you would like to see or have more information. Also, Mr. Bodie has information he can share too, if you have other questions. At the Endowment, or the, we gotta get used to saying the Foundation Board Meeting last week, Mr. Rios asked for the amount of scholarships that had been given by the board during fiscal year 2013 and 2014. So in 2013, the Endowment Association awarded $289,000 in scholarships and the projection for 2014 is $170,000 as a maximum. When you were driving on campus this morning, you probably saw that we have a street light at the crossing from housing onto the campus. This year we have three, I think, blind students who are living in housing who have to cross that street. And so we have put up a light so that they will be safe in crossing. It's a solar light, which is money-saving and it's also something we've done to be sensitive to the environment. But we have that on campus and it's open, I mean, and the light works for our students. That's my report.
Thank you.
Dr. Gibbons, why is it down for 2014?
I would imagine it's down because of.
Not down, that's fall only.
That's fall.
And their projection for the fall is 2014.
Okay, that answers your question. So is it gonna be double that by the spring?
I understand, I will, I'm not gonna guarantee that, it depends on application, criteria, but it'll be close to it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Ask for a motion to approve the president's report?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved to second to accept the president's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Vice President for Academic Affairs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into my formal report, I have a couple of.
Before we get into my formal report, I have a couple of individuals to introduce. First, I'd like to ask Dr. Ed Kramer and Mr. Bill Sixto to come forward. They're going to introduce our students who did the internships this summer with Chevron, so you can get an idea of what they did. Ed?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, we've spent quite a bit of time working with Chevron and now Optera, developing the internship program and the education plan for the energy project that's taking place here on campus. So, this summer, two students, Michael and Lamass, that are sitting there, did an internship. They're going to explain that to you, what they did, and we're working on the plan for the fall, which Don and her colleagues are going to explain as well. But I'm going to turn it over to Bill so he can tell you a little bit about that and introduce them. Thank you.
Well, as you all know, we're no longer Chevron, we're Optera. And it's an exciting time because now we're completely a energy-related company. We're not, for some people here at the campus, it might be nice to know that we're no longer Big Oil. But anyway, we had a, apart from all that, you know all about the internships. And we've had two wonderful young men come to our offices and it was, it was some play, but it was mostly work. And I have the two ladies here that run our In Vision Program across the country. And they were here hands-on with these two young men. And I want you to know that we're going to continue this program in the fall. We're structuring that right now. And I know that kids will be in class and so we will be working around those parameters. But the first internship in my mind was extremely successful and I think we should all be very proud of them. And they will give you their presentation momentarily. But now I'd like to introduce briefly Don Johnson and Don Kufakis, Don J. and Don K. They're the two ladies that will briefly introduce the two young men, but I want them to give you an overview of the program. So, thanks very much.
I'm Don J. It was with great pleasure that we had two of your pre-engineering students, Lamass Tigal Bay and Michael Peterson. Participate in our first paid summer internship program this past summer. These students were completely immersed in engineering activities that were actually being done or had been done within our own organization. They had an opportunity to work on actual work that had already been done here at the campus. So, they were looking at utility bills for your campus, actually putting them into spreadsheets, actually doing the engineering work that had already been done by other previous engineers. And then they came back and were able to work on actual live projects that we were currently doing. These students were great. They were truly an asset to our working teams this summer. And as both Bill and Ed stated, we are preparing to enroll two more students in our internship program for the fall semester. That program will begin in early October, so we'll be interviewing students and looking at applications and resumes over the next three weeks. For us though, at least for both Don and I, it was really a great experience to see our actual engineers and the great reward they got out of sharing their experiences with the students and actually working with those students on a day-to-day basis. As a matter of fact, one of the engineers that is here, he said, you know, sometimes you get in the, you know, down in the trenches of your engineering work and you're busy doing all this paperwork that you have to do now and you don't always get to do engineering. And so, one of the things that he was happiest to do was actually get back and do some of that engineering work with the students. So, as I hope as rewarding as it was for those two students, it was equally as rewarding for our staff and our engineers. So, I will let Lamass and Michael tell you about their experience now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present in front of the board today. To present the Chevron Energy Solutions, now Optera, and Kansas City Kansas Community College Summer Internship Program 2014. I am Michael Peterson.
And I'm Lamass Tigal Bay and I would also like to thank you all for letting us be here. And we will share with you our experiences over the summer with now Optera through our presentation.
Sorry, I'm just going to forget that.
I told you, my name is Lamass. I graduated up here from KC KCC with my junior studies degree. And I'm now enrolled at UMKC, working on my civil engineer degree. And with the degree, I plan on using it to help support my passion in riding horses and team roping. I also plan on using the degree that I obtained to start a business with my brothers in type of engineering.
And again, my name is Michael Peterson. I am a current student here at Kansas City Kansas Community College. My plan is to transfer to KU for the fall semester next year to pursue a petroleum engineering degree. I'm going back to school after nine years in the mental health and social services field. And something that you might want to know about me is that when the internship was announced, I was down at the dean's office pretty much every single day, to the point that his secretary was turning me away before I even had a chance to walk in the door, telling me that he was out of the building or in meetings. So, I was very excited for the opportunity to have this internship.
First day up at the office was our orientation, but we wasn't really sure what to expect. But thanks to Don and K., they really helped us lighten our moods and get rid of a lot of attention and relax. We did a staff overview and office walkthrough where we walked through the whole office and met with some of the staff members that we'd be working with out there at the office. And then we was given a packet which introduced us to Chevron, which is Optera now.
And after our orientation, we were given several days off. And during that time, we were giving online seminars to work on through the Association of Energy Engineers. Some of the modules that we were given were the basics of energy management, one, two, five and six, energy management and energy auditing, energy management planning, HVAC fundamentals, lighting 101 and commercial lighting audits. This really gave us a strong foundation prior to going into the office to do our works because it gave us a history of the energy field, the current trends that are going on, the, you know, where it's going in the future. And it also gave us the different areas that energy is used and how it's consumed in those areas. Additionally, there is a lot of emphasis on formulas, calculating the rates and then also calculating the usage, which was very beneficial going forward.
Then we was back to, then we was back to do some work. We met with Vicky and Stephanie who worked with us on data entry. And there they showed us how to plug all the data into the Excel spreadsheets and also showed us what to do with billing inconsistencies. So, we originally started to work on City of Arlington, but they gave us City of Rockton to work on to start us off with. And we got through that fairly quickly, so then we went to City of Rockton, which we continued to work on for the rest of the day.
The next day that we were in the office, we worked on baselines with Mark Adams. And he actually wanted us to go and work on the data that we were supposed to have finished the day before City of Arlington. So, we actually spent most of that day working on Arlington since we spent the day before doing Rockton. There was a little change in the schedule, but it was something that we were able to complete before the end of the day. And baselines were definitely the most important part in the pre-project phase because you take the bills that are given to Chevron, you analyze them, and then you have to take into account a lot of issues such as weather patterns. Was it too hot or too cold? So, that would increase or decrease the billing for that year. Additions to the building, whether the usage of the building has been, has changed, whether it's increased in occupancy or decreased. And whether or not some of the equipment has been upgraded or new equipment has been installed. The reason that you have to take all this into effect is because everything that you do going forward is based on this baseline. All the savings calculations, all the costs going forward are based on this baseline. So, again, it is definitely the most important part of the pre-project phase and there's a lot of emphasis on making sure that you get it right. Following this then, we met with Eric Cox and he had us doing billing rates. He actually gave us the bills, copies of bills for Jewel Building here from July 2013 through June 2014. And he had us analyze those bills and pull out a lot of essential data from that, including, sorry, the usage, demand charge, facility charge, comp rates, environmental surcharge, pilot fees, customer charges, among other things. And he showed us how it all breaks down. He had us enter them into spreadsheets and then do a very basic rate calculation to figure out what the rate is that you're paying per kilowatt hour here in Kansas City, Kansas, in Jewel.
After working with Eric, we was working with Jerry on modeling. There we was working with utilizing the train system analyzer where we was inputting facility equipment to establish the baseline and also adjusting schedules and upgrading equipment for potential savings. And Jerry did example with us on the Flint building and walked through with us how to plug the data and variables into the system analyzer. And he gave us two examples for the Jewel building for us to go back and work on and plug in as well. And it was nice to see how the variables were all compiled and compared to the actual buildings and the modeling system. I like, I really like modeling because once we got our output, if there was any inconsistencies, it was kind of fun to go back into the system analyzer and kind of tweak the variables and data so if we can fix the inconsistencies that was found out there. So, that was a fun project.
And then following this, we worked with Dwight and doing rate analysis. Essentially, what we did was combine the previous two days with billing rates and modeling and combine them together. He gave us two projects to work on. One was going over the billing rates for main campus here and pretty much had us working backwards. Here's the usage and here's the cost, now figure out the rest of it. I probably spent the majority of my day just sitting there formatting spreadsheets, so figuring out what important information was needed. Entering the formulas into those spreadsheets, but by the time that that was all finished, I pretty much filled three columns and the rest of the thing filled itself out. The next project he gave us is essentially doing the same thing, but then we took the billing rates we did with Jewel, with Eric, and then the modeling we did with Jerry and combined them together to figure out something that came extremely close to what the actual bills were. So, comparing the system analyzer to the real bills and try to match them up. A really big part of this also was that he gave us the actual bill, rate structure breakdown from Board of Public Utilities so that we had the ability to then input the actual rates and make sure that all the numbers are accurate instead of doing practice runs like we were doing the previous day. And again, you know, as Lamass had said, this was my favorite part of the internship program because it really gave me the ability to just sit there and do things on my own and figure it out on my own. You know, we had a lot of questions, we went to the engineers and they're more than helpful to help us figure this out, but then let us go back and try to figure it out ourselves.
And after that office work, we was out at the field with Dwight. And out there we was doing, at the Kansas KCC, we was doing data, data, getting data information. Right there you have us at the field house, we was looking on top at a rooftop unit. We was writing down supplier votes, compressor spray unit, the model number, the sheer number, the horsepower of the unit. And there was other information that we was writing down that we would need back in the office as well. We started writing all that down, but then afterwards we just used, well, Mark used his phone because my phone was malfunctioning, to take pictures of the information on the unit so we could go back in the office and just use the pictures instead of writing all that down. We was also looking at the DX condenser and air handling unit at the Flint building. And the condenser is what I really liked because it was interesting to see how it pulled the cool air from outside and plugged it into the unit and then distributed it out to the rest of the classroom or the building wherever it was needed. We also looked at chillers, boilers and cooling towers at the Performing Arts Center. And also out at KC KCC, we was working with Kevin who gave us a breakdown on the hierarchy on the project. He also had us watch a safety video, which he then asked us questions about to make sure we kind of understood what was going on while out in the field. After the safety video, we did a walkthrough where we watched the lighting demo that took place. And then he reiterated the fact of the safety, how to keep your eyes open and be aware of your surroundings and how our equipment and operation is out there. While continuing the walkthrough, we met with trench diggers, construction workers and pipe workers who was able to kind of chat with us a little bit and let us know about how it is out in the field and kind of what to, how to act and what to respect out there. One thing I remember Kevin telling us while we was out there was to check and double check. Because even though your members may say that they completed the task that was at hand and they got it done like he wanted to, if it wasn't done correctly, then the repercussions will all fall back on the project manager or in this case it would be Kevin. So, just always remember to check and double check over your staff's work.
And additionally, while we were talking to some of the other crew members working out there, one of them gave the advice that, you know, make sure that you're always talking with the guys on the ground. They're the ones that are going to have the most accurate and updated information on the projects that are going on. If they're behind schedule or ahead of schedule, you know, you need to know that if they are behind schedule, what it is that, what supports you can give them to make sure that they can complete their projects on time. Additionally, another gentleman said to us that when you're the person making the decision, you need to stand by your decision. And in order to do that, you have to have the most accurate information. Because there's no, if something goes wrong, there's no turn around and say, well, he said something else. You're the person that's supposed to be in charge here, which really, you know, goes with what Kevin said with us before. Make sure that you're checking and that you're double checking everything that's going on. Now, after our fieldwork days at KC KCC, we went back into the office, which I was more than happy about because we spent a little bit of time up on those roofs and I am not the biggest fan of heights. While we were back in the office though, we worked with Aaron Cox doing equipment audit data calculations. So, we really took the information that we wrote down and or took pictures from the nameplates of the different pieces of equipment. And from them, we took the model numbers, did some searching online, contacted some merchandisers and pulled the specs for these pieces of equipment. From that, we were able to calculate the efficiency ratings of each of these equipments, find possible upgrades if you wanted to upgrade them. And then also we're able to do cost benefit analysis for each of these things.
After working with Aaron, we was then back to working with Brandon on data entry. Now, him, he also walked through with us on how to input all of the lighting, the lighting locations and the room numbers into the Excel worksheet. And then he turned to us to work on this on our own. But some of the locations didn't have like the room numbers on them, so we kind of had to add our own room numbers for like the hallways and some of the other rooms to kind of improvise for it. But working with this project made me and Mark really feel like we was actually a part of the CES team working with this project because, for the City of Arlington, Texas, by the way. Because it was like, it was a current project that Brandon was working on and he was really needing help to get it done. So, it made me and Mark feel like we really needed to kind of buckle down and make it less mistakes as possible. So, when he goes back over our work, he can kind of, kind of just flow through it a little easier without having to make a lot of mistakes. So, that really made us feel a part of the team. And after working with Brandon, we was back at KC KCC with Dwight and Kevin. While out there, we were supposed to do a lighting audit, but there was a shutdown that day, shutdown scheduled. And there was a heavy downpour of rain, so we didn't get to the lighting audit that we were supposed to do. Instead, we walked through with Kevin and looked at the damages that was done due to the rain and we got on the roofs again. We kind of saw how it was all flooded and looked at some other damages. Another problem out there where it was happening was issues with the light bulbs overheating and the transformers overheating as well. So, we sat down with Dwight, Kevin and the KC KCC maintenance team. And it was interesting to see how they sat down, the two of the parties sat down together and addressed the issue at hand with the transformers and the lights. And they collaborated to come up with a solution and or alternative to figure out a way to fix those transformers overheating and the light bulbs overheating as well. So, that was a nice, a nice firsthand experience to kind of see how they operate out in the real world, so that was a good one.
You know, and some of the projects that we did were relatively easy and we were able to complete them, you know, with a lot of time left in the day. And that really gave us the opportunity to go around the office and see if there are any other projects that we could help on. Some of those additional projects are, we were working on the CES SharePoint data site where we looked at monitoring and closed projects to see if there's any information that wasn't entered into the project database to identify those areas that had missing information. And then also, for the ones that did have a complete information, open up a printable presentation and see if that information transferred over. And, because if it doesn't, then that means that there's a bug in the system that they would need to identify. We also were part of a super-secret focus group that we're really not able to talk about, so we're just going to move on. I worked on finding a high-resolution map of Lawton, Oklahoma because when you blow up an image of Google Earth, it's just really, really blurry and washed out. So, spent a good part of the day finding a high-resolution map and then trying to print off a colored version, which Dr. Kramer was actually beneficial in helping me do because I ran into him the very last day that we were out here on campus. And he allowed me some access to the. And he allowed me some access to the AutoCAD room because we have a color plotter there and I was able to print one off and get it back to the office. We worked on pivot tables for Coleman County, Alabama, where we had all of their bills for every meter in the entire county, water, electric, and natural gas. And when you have that all inputted into different tabs in an Excel file, it can get very overwhelming. So it condenses it down into one pivot table. So we sat there and made sure again that the information is being transferred over. And we also found some inputting errors during that time. So we were able to make those corrections because those numbers were much bigger than they should have been and would have thrown off a lot of stuff. Inputting water main, testing data for a project in Oklahoma. And Lamass?
Was working with Eric Cox on operational and maintenance savings for lighting for Hempstead, Texas ISD.
We just really wanted to point out what Kansas City, Kansas is getting out of this. That some of the, that the upgrades that are happening here on the campus is that there are lighting retrofits, both indoors and outdoors. The building automation systems that really control the environment and the temperature in here have been upgraded. They connected Flint, PAC, and nursing to the main chillers, converting the heating from electric to natural gas. As we all know, roof and also glass window replacements. And then also the field house rooftop units have been replaced.
So we're looking at the total cost for the upgrades at roughly $8 million. The first year estimates for the energy savings was around $307,000 bucks. For maintenance savings, $23,503. And the total first year savings, we're looking at rough about $331,000.
And in conclusion, we know that this is a brand new program for Chevron Energy Solutions and that there are definitely a lot of wrinkles that needed to be ironed out. There were definitely, there were some times where our point of contact made little adjustments not knowing that it would affect us for another project down the road. And so there are times that we were having to think on our feet and make a lot of adjustments, but it really benefited us, you know, having to really take that time and figure it out. But at the end of the day, we were always able to deliver our objectives. And that, you know, there was always, there was always a lot of downtime. But again, that allowed us to meet with other individuals that we normally would not have had the opportunity to talk with or interact with throughout the rest of the program. So it was actually very beneficial and it really expanded our experiences there. You know, and some of the things that we really learned is that there are very few opportunities for internship on the associate's level program. And so to have this opportunity, you know, really gave us the experience of being in an active engineering setting and seeing how projects really work from inception to conclusion.
And also, also with this being me and Mike was first internship, it was a kind of big step for both of us because we got into it with such a big company like Optera. So it was a nice experience. And it also taught us good office etiquette and how like the real world ops operates out in the office setting like that. And for me, this would benefit me going forward as far as me because I wanted to go into civil engineering. So it gave me a real good idea of the, like the structure of how the office will work in the engineering type field and how different people with all these different ideas can collaborate and come together, come together in one and solve the problems and get the project or whatever, whatever's at hand done and get it done in a timely fashion and move on to get the next project done. So it was real beneficial, what to expect for the real world in the office setting like that for engineering.
And definitely the biggest thing that I take away from this is that this is, you know, I'm going back to school. And it was a big decision for me to decide to kind of jump in feet first and start over. And the internship program has really validated my desire to go back to school and it's reinforced my wanting to go into the energy engineering sectors. And in conclusion, we really want to thank everybody that took their time at Chevron Energy Solutions because it is an active work environment there. And on a typical day, it can, it can already be stressful to juggle, you know, your different workloads. And then to have Lamass and myself come in and trying to teach us and show us what it is that they did there, you know, we were extremely beneficial, we were extremely happy and we took a lot of benefit out of it. And we wanted to thank everybody that volunteered their time. And thank you for having the opportunity to present today.
Thank you.
Well, we'd like to thank you for your report. Do the school have a pilot? Do we pay a pilot too?
Yes.
Is the pilot more than our bill?
No, it's in addition, it's tacked on to your bill.
I know it's tacked on. I want to know if it's more than what the bill is, the water and light is.
I'm not the expert here, don't quote me, but I want to say it was maybe 10 or 11%.
Ooh.
But I could be.
I didn't know that.
His statement's accurate.
Okay. You go to a civil engineer and yours is going to be what?
Petroleum engineer.
Petroleum. Okay.
Well, I'm impressed. I think these guys.
I am very impressed.
I mean, I got it. And Bill and Dawn and Dawn and everybody, you know, thanks for your, I mean, this has met my expectations, if not well exceeded them for what we were looking for in an internship opportunity. And I'm impressed.
Yeah, quite impressive.
I'm exhausted just listening to your interviews.
One final comment. I'm going to send everyone an email of the transaction between Chevron and Optera and what that means. And also then, I'd like to ask you that if you have any questions about the internship program, because we're moving forward. And so you can see that these guys are engineers. I mean, this is technical stuff. And so if you have questions or issues or things that you would like to see develop, anything at all, please respond and I'll do a joint email and perhaps we can help build some more additional knowledge that will help us with our next phase of interns. So we really appreciated it from our side and so we hope to continue. Thanks very much.
Very well done.
Mr. Chairman, actually, to your question, I actually think the, our practice learners, the interns, could probably give the best insight as to what we should be sure to maintain within the current opportunity and what do you feel you missed that would have been beneficial if you could have had some additional experience?
Well, I definitely think that, you know, based on everything that we worked on and all the information that we had a chance to, that we had a chance to look at before we actually went into the office, there is a lot of emphasis on having a dedicated energy manager at whatever location you do these upgrades at. Because that person is going to be the single individual who is making sure that you hold true to the, hold true to the, the, the goals of the energy management. Because you could do all these upgrades, but if you're not really following what it is, following the schedules, following the, making sure that the maintenance is up to date, you're really just throwing that money back out the window. So making sure there's somebody whose single goal is to emphasize this is what we need to do in order to make this work for us. And probably something that we missed out on, my expectation is not really knowing what to get, what we were getting ourselves into, I thought we were going to be doing a lot of more hands-on field work here at the school. I realize now that a lot of that had to have been done in the past to be at the phase that we are right now with the construction. But, you know, it would have been very beneficial to go through and do a lot of the, you know, a lot of the individual audits so that we could see what it is more like on a day-to-day process as opposed to having ready-made projects for us. But, you know, the ready-made projects were still extremely beneficial in giving us the experience of what it is like to be in that environment.
Kind of like what Mike was saying, out here, I was kind of expecting more of the hands-on type work out here, but as far as missing, minus that fieldwork from being in the office as far as missing anything is, for me, it was clearly kind of hard to say, being my first internship and kind of acting, because I'm still a little young and been out there in the, in the real world, working with all the engineering and those computer. But being in the office since we did so much over that little time span and was working with the different engineers and the different project managers on the different projects, it was really, it was really like, I mean, a little, not really overwhelmed, but it was just kind of fun and just a lot to kind of take in and soak in all at once. So as far as missing anything, for me, it was really, don't think really missed it like too much because it gave us a real good structure in the background on how to do everything out in the field. And as far as maybe for the future, if, for me, like if we did maybe like a couple more or a few more current projects that they was kind of working on, if they was able to handle it or if we can handle it, which we did pretty good. But if we could work on like maybe more current projects to get, make us feel a lot more involved in the internship and kind of really have us buckle down a little more because the projects we was working on, they had us really, you know what I'm saying, working on it, but they was projects that has already been kind of processed through and already been done. So we was just kind of practicing, which is just like a little practice. But with more current projects, it would kind of help us get more, like feel more, a lot more involved to work on and really buckle down and get the work done in a more timely fashion. So that would be my only added addition to it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, we hear a lot from employers of the need for good candidates to have these soft skills. And it sounds like from your experience, the soft skills like being able to communicate, talk with people, be able to think and be innovative on your own. It sounds like from your experience that that's, was confirmed with what you found in your workplace.
And, you know, one thing that I also wanted to mention really quick is that because this is the first time they've done an internship program like this, I know that Chevron Energy Solutions didn't really know what to expect either. And, you know, talking with them, they, they know what adjustments to make going forward and how to make it a better program for the next set of interns that are there. So the, the next internship program that they expect to start next month will, could, you know, be very different from the one that we experienced, you know, all for the better.
And one other question for the ladies in the back. Two really good candidates did a wonderful job. I'm just curious if you're having any women applicants?
We hope so.
So do we.
In fact, we didn't in the, in the previous one, but we, actually, the candidate who's coming down to my office now, kind of like Mike did pretty much every day, is a female. And she's in a calculus class here at the college, so she's going to be a really good, strong fit, I think, for this program. She's come down to my office probably five times since the semester started.
Squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
One of the things we did, we surveyed Lamass and Michael at the end of every single activity that they did and then at the end of the program. So exactly to your point, we really wanted to know what was working for them, how did the modules fit with them, and what could we do to improve it? Because although we truly enjoyed having them and they far exceeded in the presentation at the very end, all of our hopes that we had for them. So we're really excited to see what the next two interns will bring.
Well, I think it was, it was excellent. I, I'm just sitting there thinking because the idea came to me when I went to the KACC meeting and it was some students from California, one of the California schools where Chevron is, and they had had their experience. So I made sure that Brad, every time I talked to him, which was on a daily basis, I told him, if we don't get them internships, you can't have the jobs. So I am, I am delighted. I, I am. This is one of the best things that's ever happened.
Okay, any more questions?
Question for the administration. We had another really important internship start this year happen with General Motors. I just wonder if we can get a report on that for the next meeting of that internship with.
All right. We did that before.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Kramer and Mr. Seuss.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Mr. Vice President, any further comments?
No, I'd like to add my congratulations. I thought they did an excellent presentation. And, you know, one of them mentioned the fact that a lot of times, these types of internships are not for associate degree-level students. So I think for them to move into that environment and succeed was commendable. It speaks highly of the education they're getting here at KC KCC. So thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Denise McDowell, who wants to, is going to give a presentation on our strategic plan update. Dr. McDowell?
And I'm going to invite my sidekick, Sunkey Min. He does not get away. He was trying. We have provided the annual summary for 2013-14. And Dr. Sunkey Min and myself, Dr. Denise McDowell, are co-chairs for the Strategic Plan Committee. We also have on our committee, on the core team, a faculty representative, Jesse Johnson, and a staff representative, Carolyn McCain. And you will find that information in the document that you have. In addition, there's a whole host of, Dr. Cali is also on that core and Mr. Brian Bodie. We also have in this document, a listing of the other members who are on the team. You have with the bound document, also a loose document that's in the back that has on top of it, things are happening. And in that document, you will also see a full list of all members who are on the strategic plan, work group leaders and work group members. In the front of that loose document, you will see the types of things that are happening. So we're going to go through our PowerPoint presentation referring you to both of those documents, providing it for you as a first read, giving you an opportunity to peruse it in more depth. And we will remain open for questions, comments, and feedback. Again, our wonderful board of directors, trustees, we'd like to again thank you for supporting this effort through, we will find that this year, 12-13 was our first year coming to you. 13-14 is actually a report of the efforts that, the fruit of our labor, I will say. And I think that you will see that a lot of work took place this year. Again, I've already shared with you the board, the strategic plan development team. We wanted to make sure that we put other people's names in light. It wasn't just Sunkey Min and I. It wasn't just the president, wasn't just the vice presidents who are working on this committee. It's a whole team of individuals who work tirelessly to make this happen in addition to our work group leaders. We have three strategic directions for the college. One being to improve student success and academic achievement. And in that category, we have three goals that we work on. One of them has to do with student success and developmental education, and that is led by Dr. Brenda Kelly, who is the work group leader, and she has other members who are on her team. We also have a, another goal under there to improve the quality of student learning outcomes. And this one is really focused on assessment. And Ms. Carice White is our work group leader there, and she is working along with Sunkey Min, with faculty, on really working on assessment of their courses and outcomes related to our various courses here at the college. Another direction under strategic direction, one is the enhancement of institution-wide commitment to student success, and that is led by our work group leader, Mr. Sean Darrett. And they're really working again to try to create seamless processes for students from the point of entry to the point of exit. Our second strategic direction has to do with improving responsiveness to evolving workforce and community needs. Our work group leader there was Dr. Marvin Hunt, and he also has a team of people who is working with him. Another goal under our next strategic direction is enhancing organizational effectiveness. Another goal under, our next strategic direction is enhancing organizational effectiveness and culture. We have three goals under there, one is to support an organizational culture focused on excellence, and our work group leader is Ms. Barbara Clark Evans. We also have another one called enhancing organizational effectiveness, dealing with our sustainability, our technology, led by Ms. Susan Stewart. And our third goal under this one is enhancing organizational effectiveness, led by Mr. Jim Beechwood, that deals a lot with marketing. This year in 2013-14, things did happen, and I know that's always a big question. What you have in the bound document is more in-depth, what we tried to highlight for you in things are happening, the big things that people would notice right away. Under our first strategic direction, updating of the developmental education, reflecting our placement scores and our mandatory placement, and really trying to get students who test into developmental education placed in those developmental education courses in their first semester, so they can do that foundation work and move forward. We had an assessment workshop in our spring in-service for faculty, where we invited a speaker in, who really again focused on the assessment process, what that looks like. Some faculty are really on board, some people are still a little leery of the assessment process, and I'm sure Dr. Min can talk more to that. Our respiratory care therapist program, our physical therapy assistance, our licensed practical nursing, and our registered nursing program, all were reaccredited in 13-14. When we look at our student success, mandatory student orientation is now listed as one of the steps in the enrollment checklist. Testing and implementation of degree audit, our students will now have that available to them this fall. Our project coordinators tested it, our graduation and transcript services personnel tested it last year, and they all believe this degree audit is a game changer for Kansas City, Kansas Community College. The KCK Go mobile app was rolled out to students and faculty of this fall. Our new KCK website was rolled out as well, and we hope you all are enjoying that. I know Baz and his team worked tirelessly on that project, and I know they're very proud of it, as are we. Improving our responsiveness to involving workforce and community needs, creating a workforce development entrepreneurial ship center is something that we'll be opening this fall, is combining workforce development and our career center, and I know that is under development. The Kaufman Foundation invited KCKCC to be a part of the Slingshot Project, and upgrading the curriculum for the fleet program. Enhancing our culture, Donuts with Don and Doris was a big hit, and we had several folks who went through that. Installation of the new voicemail system to include adjunct faculty mailboxes, Alice, Title IX, the Clari Act, are all things that have been emphasized both last year and have really been hit hard this fall, and we will continue to make sure our community is aware of those initiatives that will impact our community. And text messaging, letting our students, our faculty and our staff know when the school is closed for emergencies. You heard about this one, the Chevron Project, you've probably noticed our new windows, you've heard the noise with our new roof, but you've seen the improvements as well, so we're all excited about that. The opening of our art gallery in the Lord Jewel, many of you had an opportunity to participate, and the installation of the vendor misers to help us again conserve the energy. We also did a lot this year for stage setting, getting ready for things that are gonna happen for 14-15, and Dr. Min will share a little bit about those things.
Mandatory advisement will be required for all students for spring 2015 with the 30 or less credit hours effective November 1st, 2014, and there's a word for best assessment projects will be announced at the, we already announced at the fall in-service, and for spring 2015, presentations and evaluations and selection of winners. And retention alert module has been purchased and built, and implementation will take place campus-wide this semester. The AOK grant program, yes.
What is that?
The retention alert module?
Yeah, the retention alert, what, how are you using it, what's it do?
Do you want us?
What the retention alert will allow is faculty to notify a point of contact, and at this point, that point of contact is Amanda Williams. If a student has stopped attending class, if they are not passing tests consistently, if there are some other concerns in reference to behavior, they can submit the student's name, and there are a number of people who that message was streamed to, so that we can identify that student and start providing them with the necessary support to keep them retained and help them address those concerns.
Good, sounds good. Thank you.
And the AOK grant program will allow students to enroll in tech program even before completing their GED beginning this semester. And renovated the Business Innovation Center, and another one at Tech Center, and Waffles with Wendell and Doris this time. And...
Is that an upgrade?
Depends on what you like. Sounds like it, huh?
That's good.
And the course shells for all courses are available from this semester, so that any class, whether they are online or ground, can have the, the place to store their information. Trizolo Communications were selected to facilitate and support integrated marketing and communication plan for the college.
And we just want to acknowledge the fact that in all human affairs, there are efforts and there are results, and the strength of the effort is a measure of our results. And we think in 2013-14, the strategic plan with the help of our work group leaders and the efforts of the entire college, that we were able to produce results, that the strategic plan helped support. They may have been things that were already on the burner, but with the strategic plan, it fortified the need to take care of those things now, more than later. I know you have not had total time to review the entire document, but also in the document, if you will peruse through it, you will see key performance indicators, which will help you see how we perform sometimes in comparison with national data as well. Also, we will see efforts in the back that are some statistical information that talk to us about our enrollment trends, our demographic information, if you're looking at pages 18 through 23, our class, who's here, and also our financial aid distribution as well. So again, I am certain when you have an opportunity to peruse through, we just highlighted some of the high notes and things that if you were talking to anyone on campus, they would notice, but there are many more details in this document that if we had additional time, we could highlight those things as well. I am open, as is Sunkey, to entertain any questions that you may have in reference to the document that you have.
All right.
Yes?
Okay, our, our head count is down, but our credit hours is up.
Well, when you're looking at 13, are you looking at last year for 13-14? Looks like both, when we looked at our head count and our credit hours in the 13-14 and our 12-13, when you're comparing those two, our head count and credit outs were, credit hours were down.
Okay, and it's 14 just for one semester?
For the 14, our fall 14 is not in this document, it will be in the next year's document.
Okay.
And we'll talk about fall 14 at a later meeting, if that's what you'd like.
But in your report, I think you indicated we were down about 4% this fall.
Yes, for this fall, yes.
Compared to?
Fall, last, same time last year.
Yeah, it's in your report, not that report, but...
In your Board of Trustees report.
Okay, we can come back later on and ask you questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so at this time, we would like for you to read through it, and then if you have any questions, again, feel free to send them to us, send them to Dr. Vitale, that will get it to the committee, and we will be happy to address them.
Going to be a test?
Yes, we'll give you a test, yes.
Denise, I have a question.
Yes.
How's the Strategic Planning Committee using this information?
The informa, the, which, which information, sir, I'm sorry?
The, this booklet, I mean, all the information you have in here, what's the Strategic Planning Committee doing with it?
Well, the strategic, because we gave this report to you first, once we know that we can distribute it more broadly, I think we shared it with the deans, we shared it, we'll share it with the Strategic Plan Committee tomorrow at our first meeting, and then we'll make it broadly available. Our hope is that we will take this information and use it again to tweak some of the goals that we have, to redirect maybe some of our energy, and to verify that we're moving in the right direction. I think many of the things, especially in the stage setting, last year was used to develop many of those things, so we won't know the results of mandatory advising till we get to this time next year. We won't know the full results of how our retention alert, what will be the return on our investment till we get to next year. So this year, we spent a lot of time developing and implementing and really setting the stage for the work that we'll be doing for 14-15.
But the committee will be using this to make adjustments on the plan.
Yes.
I think it'd be helpful for the board if you would come back after you do that and let us know, what, what did you see is needed to be changed, or what did you add, or what did you prioritize, or whatever, I think that'd be helpful for us to know, after your committee's had a chance to work on that.
Wonderful, we'd be happy to do that.
And maybe if, if you make this report in January, or six months or something, that might be a good time to let the board know what you've done as far as adjustments are made in our concern.
Beautiful, we'd be happy to do that.
Tell me why, okay, the Creative Center for Workforce Development and Entrepreneurship is gonna be combined with the Workforce Development and Career Center? What is, okay, our Career Center is not what I think it is?
The Career Center, we had, and we had also Workforce Development. They're gonna combine those two, because of some of the conversation you had today about internships, wanting more students to be involved in that, and I know some of the intimate thinking of that, Dr. Vitale may be able to share, but I know we're trying to combine those efforts, so again, we don't have a splintered kind of process, but more of a combined effort. But again, Dr. Vitale may be able to speak with more depth as to the thinking there.
Okay.
Any more questions? Well, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. I've been advised that the, the work on the roof is gonna resume in a few minutes, they wanna move along because of the impending storm that's coming, they wanna get some work done to protect the building, so the, the work will resume in just a few minutes, so when you hear it, you'll know that's what that is.
Okay, just, I do want to make sure you're aware that when you look through the strategic annual report, you'll see some dollar values attached to some of the activities that were accomplished. I know that last summer, I remember a lot of discussion about a budget for the strategic plan, and we explained that those are things that we build into our overall budget, that we don't set aside specific dollars specific for a, an activity in the strategic plan. So we wanted to show you how that was related to our actual budget and our spending, so you'll see those things as you go through the detailed report. And just quickly, at each of your tables, you'll see a memo from me on the report from Emporia State showing how our students did in the spring semester of 2014, and again, they, they doing an outstanding job at attending at Emporia State University, so you have that. And also, you had at your table a Green Ability magazine, and there's a tab on one of the things, and it's just a, a short article that our Blue Devils Kick Butts Campaign, picking up cigarette butts around the campus that they, they did in April of this year, just recognition in that magazine, so I wanted to share that with you at this point. And now then, if, I'll be glad to entertain any questions, if any of you have any on my report.
I have a question for Dr., for Dean Long. About the, about the housing task force, and wanting to know a little more information about that and the purpose of that.
Well, what we tried to do is have a loud noise.
I think they want to get you on TV, so, smile good.
I'm assuming that you're talking about a task force that includes student housing as well as athletics.
Right.
And about 75% of the residents that live in campus housing are student athletes. And what we are really trying to do is to provide the best possible living experience for our student athletes, as well as coordinating things like effective ways that they can move in early to begin their practices. It's basically just communication, logistics, finding ways to kind of enhance how those two departments can work together, so that, again, we, we have our, our housing units ready, our student athletes are, have a good experience moving in, as does their parents, and then throughout the, the year, to try to involve the student athletes, kind of beyond their specific sport, but to become, become a part of a community of people where they get to know students from, that aren't athletes, that, or that are from other teams, so we're working really hard on, on that, so that's kind of part and parcel of what the, the task force is about.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, on page 26, Dr. Vitale, reporting the Academic Resource Center, on a number of students tutoring services, either we did a really good job last year, or we did...
I think what, I got a note from Ms. Dr. Burns, I think what you're gonna hear in the next maybe half hour is a good indication of why, because of the amount of noise, they were actually having to, to kind of close down, relocate some of those services in August, and they think that impacted some of the, some of the attendance there.
That's just such significant drop off, it just...
Right, if, if, you know, depending on which one you're looking at, it kind of resembles more Fall of 12 rather than Fall of 13, so I don't know if, I don't know if there was something going on with the number of tutors, if, if math, or one of the, if they were sending students there specifically, I know, I knew that they were, I think that was the second year we did our math rollout, Ed, is that right?
Yes.
That's here, so, I don't know if that had any impact on it or not, but, yeah.
And they've also incorporated, I'm not sure if the numbers are in there, I'm assuming they probably are, would be SI instructors in the classroom, so that, they have adjunct instructor, or...
What's an, what's an SI instructor?
Supplemental instructor.
Supplemental instruction, where they have the students come into the classroom and help students.
Okay.
And we have a testing center open now for the math program and for any of the programs on campus, where, where we have faculty going in and serving part of their office hours to allow students to test in.
Great, okay, thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the Vice President's report.
Second.
Been moved to second to accept the Vice President of Academic Affairs' report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief Financial Officer, you're welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate being here. Are you picking me up with a microphone, all right? My first time around here, so I, I don't know whether you're hearing me or not, but anyway, before I, before I tell you a lot about me, I want to...
But anyway, before I, before I tell you a lot about me, I want to tell you about the connection I have with Kansas City Community College, which made it easier for me to decide to come in and be the interim CFO. And when I saw Dr. Gibbons' report about how well students do when they go to, onto other institutions, I thought, gee, that hits home with me because my wife and my daughter both graduated from Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And my daughter, my wife went on to get a bachelor's degree from St. Mary's, and she was at the time, because she was an adult learner, an administrator for a large nursing home. It made a tremendous difference for her because that was just at the point when they were saying nursing home administrators must have college degrees. And Kansas City, Kansas Community College just played a real part in making that happen. And my youngest daughter, youngest daughter, who was late starting in college, and because she would be, you know, in, out, in, out, pay this tuition debt, pay that tuition debt, but I'm sure I'll finish up, you know. But finally, we convinced her to come up to Kansas City Community College, and she went through here, finished up her associate degree, moved on to Friends University, got a bachelor's degree there, and now has a master's degree from Friends University. I mean, all this is something that started here. And so whenever I was asked to be interim Chief Financial Officer, I thought, well, at least I have a connection. At least I'm not a total stranger, even though Dr. Gibbons said, have you been on campus lately? And I said, no, I hadn't been. But this is a place that's a little closer to my heart than maybe Johnson County might be, even though I live in Johnson County, but I was telling...
Dr. Daniels.
Dr. Daniels. See, I do forget things. I was telling him, I can see Turner from my house, you know, so it's a very nice short drive for me. But, and also, my daughter and my wife made very good grades, great foundation. I mean, when I was looking at 4.0 once in a while, I thought, boy, they're doing all right. And I think a lot of that came from the foundation they got here. So I'll stop there and say, about me, I retired from Baker University in 2002 as the Vice President for Finance and Administration. Prior to that, I was with Rockers University. I was a CFO there. And I came to Kansas City Metropolitan Area to work for the Nelson Atkins Museum of Art. And I was there as their Finance Director and Operations Person. And when I was at, I'm not going to make it as long, my wife said, what do you do? Don't talk too much. So when I was at the Nelson, I ran into Tom Savage, and I don't know whether many people knew Tom Savage, but he was, I thought, an excellent leader, good man, and did wonderful things in the inner city. And he convinced me to come over to Rockers because they were doing things there that I was interested in, you know. Gave me a chance to be on the Board of 4963 and work with the neighborhood housing services in that community and get a real feel for what was happening with the inner city in Kansas City, Missouri. I worked here with Tom as President until the new President came in, and Tom left for medical reasons. And I was offered a job then down at Baker University. And I thought, that's a great, small college where, finally, I've got a football team I can watch, you know. And so I worked there until I retired in 2002. And in 2002, I said, I'm really done working. And that lasted about three, four months. And I found that being interested and being involved with people is a way of life that you just don't walk away from. So I spent some time working with the Shepherd Centers in Kansas City, Missouri, doing bookkeeping, grant writing. And in 2009, Dr. Long, who was President at Baker at that point, asked me if I would come back and be the interim CFO at Baker until they were able to put something together that they felt would work, either hire someone or bring someone in-house on board and into that position. And I think a lot of the board had met Susan Lindell, and she was there at the time. Susan and I worked together, and I started out full-time, kind of worked my way down to, until I was out the door in 2012. And that was a great experience for me. You know, after that, I went to the Charlotte Street Foundation. So if any of your folks are interested in what's happened in the art community in Kansas City, Missouri, that's the place to look because they're, they make grants to young artists, they provide studio space for young artists, they have a small gallery, and it's a not-for-profit that's looked at very keenly by the Hall Family Foundation and Warhol Foundation out of New York, funds a great organization. Finished up there, and then I, Dr. Gibbons, gave me a call and said, would I be interested in coming here and be the interim CFO? And, you know, we had talked, and I agreed to do that. You know, I have an undergraduate degree from, well, go way back, way back. I had two years of accounting school at a business college, you know. Then I had, then I got an undergraduate degree from State University of New York. But a lot of that was done to be through adult education classes, continued education classes. So I'm a guy that got a bachelor's degree when I was 37, you know. By that time, though, I was, I was acting, I was a Vice President for Finance at Indiana Western University because I was a good interviewer, I was just like, you know, and I must have done something right. But, so, I'm here now. I'm hoping that I can add value to what you're doing, and if I can, I'll, I feel like I've accomplished something. And I know there'll be a period of time when you'll be coming to me and saying, well, we've got the new man, and here's the right man, and that'll be fine with me. But that's where I am at this point. Now, Finance Committee, you probably noticed in your packet, minutes from the Finance Committee. So you can, if you read those over, you could see that we're talking about issues, we're not trying to avoid problems. And I thought it was a very, very good meeting that I was involved in. There was a lot of give and take, and I think we'll continue that. You know, we'll continue to take minutes, maybe not in quite as much detail as we've got this time around. This was kind of like blow, blie, blow, everybody said something. But we do want to put together a packet of information for you that you can say, here's the committee, it's actively working, JD is leading us, we're on our way to, we hope make some positive changes. So with that being said, Joe, I would ask that you approve the agenda items. We have payment of bills, financial report, and recommendations. So if you want to handle those each one individually, I'll expect that to happen hopefully.
Well, we can take them individually. We'll start with, and by the way, welcome, Mr. Layton. Appreciate your report. Also appreciated having minutes from the Finance Committee. That was very helpful, and I did read them.
Good.
Thank you.
You'd be welcome to come to any meeting.
Thank you. All right. Ask approval for payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second for payment of the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. You actually, Mr. Layton, you actually asked for the motion.
Oh, oh, all right. Very good. I wasn't sure whether I asked for motions or you did, but...
Yeah, I didn't mean to take your job, but...
No, that's right. I would entertain a motion to accept the financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved to second to accept the financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
I would ask for a motion to approve the recommendations.
So moved. Finance Committee has reviewed, makes recommendation for approval.
All right. Been moved to second to approve the recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to an executive session. Need a motion to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interest of the individuals to be discussed for consultation on matters protected by attorney-client privileges. I understand we need about 30 minutes.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second that we enter into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ask for about a five-minute break, and then we'll go into session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we come back into session. Second.
Moved to second that we come back into session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to act on recommendation by President Gibbons to reassign the Treasurer of the college.
Second. You all heard the motion? It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint the interim CFO as Treasurer of the college. Second.
Moved to second to appoint the interim CFO as interim Treasurer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Returning to the agenda, I'd like to have a report of the Director of Human Resources.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just, I'd like to present the September 2014 Personnel Agenda, and Section A from number one through six is for your information, and then Section B from number seven to 33 is for your approval.
Second.
Did have a question about the short notice of the dean that left. What, is that proper decorum for such quick exodus?
Well, normally, we would like at least a two-week notice, but he was, excuse me, he was offered a position, and they wanted him to start immediately.
And so we are obligated at the whim of somebody outside to tell us when to release an employee?
No, we're not obligated, but he did resign, and we accepted his resignation.
Any other questions?
All with a question.
Been moved to second to accept the Director of Human Resources' report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next agenda item. Thank you. A report of committees. Any committee want to report out or wish to report?
I did have a report from the Gale and Committee, but I think I'm going to wait until the next board meeting, which will still give us plenty of time, just to let you know things are moving really well. We have some exciting auction items, particularly for the live auction, and you'll be hearing more about that. Tables are selling, and we really encourage everyone to talk this event up. And remember, it's October 25th. It's going to be a wonderful event. More to come.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, as Dr. Gibbons noted, the quarterly meeting for KECT is this Friday and Saturday in Pratt, so we'll be down there. On the agenda include Dr. Angie Tompkins as well as Mr. Kenny Wilt, the Executive Director and the Chair of the Board of Regents. So we'll have some interaction with them, some dialogue. And Mr. Noah Brown, who's the Executive Director for ACCT, will be in Pratt from Washington, DC, to give us a presentation and discussion and dialogue as well. So we'll have a report of that activity next month.
Thank you, Dan.
Real quick, our College Center had their first meeting last week, and Darren Elliott was selected as the new Chair and Tammy Miller as the new Vice Chair. And they have a number of things they want to work on this year, and pretty good energy in that group.
I do have one question, President, on who is replacing Dr. Hunt in the interim?
We have not selected a person to replace him.
But the chairman is not a committee report, but if you get a chance, go to the Jazz by the Lake programs on the first Thursday of every month, and the last one, the past Thursday, was really great because it featured our music faculty. We have an incredible music faculty, if you could hear them play. And I would also like to say they had a special vocalist there that day. And we all know Dr. Walker as a quiet, sedate individual. You hand her a microphone and put her in front of a jazz band, she's incredible. So, great job.
Now her complexion matches her dress. Ray, good job.
It was a sign of Dr. Walker I have never seen before. It was, she was really good.
They didn't know you were a diva, did they?
It was a fun, fun program.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved to second, we adjourn. We adjourn.